All right, it's seven o'clock. I called to order the August ninth, twenty twenty-two Perry Township Board of Trustees meeting. For the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Here.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
At this time, I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda as proposed.
Second that.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
All right, fiscal officer report, please.
Okay, so I have several resolutions that I need for the board to entertain a motion to approve. The first one is Resolution twenty-two twenty-four, which is the supplemental reallocation of appropriations for July two thousand twenty-two with a net increase of one thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. The increase was to adjust, we had to do two hundred and seventy dollars for where we had to request credit card statements from previous years for review. And then fifteen hundred dollars was we had to increase to cover medical coverage for cost of trustees.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-four supplemental reallocations of appropriation for July two thousand twenty-two with a net increase of seventeen hundred seventy dollars.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
The second resolution is Resolution twenty-two twenty-five, a resolution to increase funds and appropriation in the gasoline tax fund two zero two one for more monies received than originally reported on our certificate of estimated resources in the amount of forty-five thousand three hundred fourteen dollars and sixty cents.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-five to increase funds and appropriations in the gasoline tax fund twenty twenty-one for more monies received than originally reported on our certificate of estimate estimated resources in the amount of forty-five thousand three hundred fourteen dollars sixty cents.
Second that motion.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two twenty-six, a resolution to increase funds and appropriation in the motor vehicle license tax fund two zero one one for more monies received than originally reported on our certificate of estimated resources in the amount of three thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-one cents.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-six and increase in funds and appropriations in the motor vehicle license tax fund two zero one one for more monies received than originally reported on our certificate of estimated resources in the amount of three thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two twenty-six.
We already have a twenty-six, should that be a twenty-seven?
Oh, okay, yes, twenty-seven, sorry.
And then we can make the next one's gonna be a twenty-eight.
Yes.
Okay.
A resolution to increase funds and appropriation and the permissive motor vehicle tax fund twenty-two thirty-one for more monies received than originally reported on our certificate of estimated resources in the amount of twenty-seven thousand ninety-three dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-seven to increase funds and appropriations in the permissive motor vehicle tax fund two two three one for more monies received than originally reported on the certificate of estimated resources in the amount of twenty-seven thousand ninety-three dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
And then finally, Resolution twenty-two twenty-eight, a resolution to increase funds and appropriation in the police fund two zero eight one for monies received, more monies received than originally reported on our certificate of estimated resources in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and five dollars.
I make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-eight for the increase of funds and appropriations in the police fund two zero eight one for more monies received than originally reported on the certificate of estimated resources in the amount of seventeen hundred five dollars.
Second.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Other items I have, all documentation required for the placement of the fire EMS levy has been submitted to Montgomery County Board of Elections. As of July twenty-fifth, the documents have been filed stamped and. I've also been contacted by the Auditor of State's office regarding our upcoming audit. They are beginning the process to bid out our audit to an independent CPA firm. The two thousand twenty-three Budget Commission meeting is scheduled for August twenty-fifth. Our request or waiver form has been completed and submitted back to the auditor's office. I was not able to attend the OTA webinars, trustee and fiscal officer compensation budget payment in question and answer or the how to organize your files, but I am working to get copies of those webinars. And then upcoming events, there are two OTA trainings I'm anticipating attending this month. One is recently enacted legislation. The other one is the Lunch and Learn Roundtable. And then they have released the dates for winter conference this year or for January. It's going to be January twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh.
Great, thank you so much. Rodent Cemetery Report.
In our cemeteries, we had two full burials at Pleasant Hill Cemetery. We cleaned up our storm damage around the cemeteries last month. We also gave a reminder that please try to remove decorations if you can. Our fall cleanup is October first. The gates to the archway sold on Gov. Deals for six hundred dollars. Our foundation orders will start next month, September. Our roads, we've been continuing to do our weekly mowing. We've completed our third round roadside mowing. Our nuisance property for zoning, for our zoning. Have been reshaping, redoing dishes on Air Hill and Keener. We've been cutting and chipping site distance issues. We will continue to be working on ditch cleanup and site distance issues. Just wanted to give a reminder also, school buses will start moving again next week. We sold our John Deere tractor on Gov. Deals for twelve thousand dollars. We'll. We will be able to purchase salt through the county this season, but we need to look into getting a contract for the future. The county is no longer giving salt out. And for to add to our new business is Providence Pike issue two, very new. That's what we want to do with that.
Were you able to get with Twin Township to discuss the sealing deal?
I have not got a direct answer.
Okay.
I need to actually go over there and physically talk to them.
Gotcha.
Calling on the phone hasn't worked.
Understand.
We will, we'll get that under wraps, but another thing I want to discuss about was this, the county engineers. I talked to Joe Duro today. County resurfacing crack seal pavement marking program for two thousand twenty-three. I've not been a part of that at all. So if you guys have been a part of it, but they will come out with requests from us. Situation or a road that we want to work on. They will give us an estimate of what that, what that costs. Then they'll put that into a bid and a part of that, I don't know, but they'll put that into a bid. Contract will come out to put it, put that into, you know, an actual bid and ask if we want to proceed with that. Anything under a hundred thousand dollars, they will front. We have to pay them back after ninety days, you know, previous to ninety days. Anything over a hundred thousand, we have to pay for upfront. So they have till the end of the month of August to have them come out, look at roads if we want to mill and fill. You give me a price of a dollar fifty a square foot for Mill and Fill. Thirty-six cents a square yard for crack seal. We have a crack sealer coming in September, October, early September.
Do we know what that looks like compared, I don't know what their estimates would be to do compared to us running and doing it ourselves, correct?
I don't know.
But that's something that this would do?
Yes.
Okay.
Like if they, you know, they might do a mile road, might be a little cheaper through them mainly because they're doing such a.
Right, they buy it in bulk.
Yes, they can walk. Mill and Fill, I don't. I don't know if they can do sections or if they do a lane width for so many feet, you know, a mile, two miles, whatever. I still have to talk to them a little bit more about that. And then like our, our painting of roads. They do that. I've not looked into doing that elsewhere or some, some other way. I don't know if that's something we're interested in, if you want to look more into it. I don't know. Who you guys, you know, if you guys want to look into it. We could look at roads.
Suggestions, yeah, after looking at the roads.
Your, our paintings on our roads are pretty bad. Yeah, I mean, we have sections on air on it, Amity that needs to be milled and filled.
Yeah.
If I knew what we were doing, but that's also some stuff we're doing with the skid loader, we can do. But I mean, if they can do it in bulk and fix some major issues and Steck Road is pretty awful and needs a lot of help, but.
So is everything moving forward with the Bobcat?
Yes, it's, I actually sent him an email last week. He didn't give me a direct date. He said, but it will be here soon. They're taking a production model and they changed that, so we should be able to get it quicker. So hopefully soon is what excellent. So it'll be good.
And you have that, you said they would come out and look at our roads?
Different projects that we want to do.
Oh, okay.
And then they would give us an estimate of what that would be.
So you already have a plan on particular roads that you're gonna do, split sheep and what's the other road?
Fourth crack ceiling?
Yeah.
Yeah, sheep, schoolhouse.
Yeah.
And then from there, we're in C. You know, I know Amity needs it really bad right now. It has a section of that last year, right after I started.
Sheeps already cracking?
Yeah.
Is that because of the heat or was it an issue with how it was done last year?
Could be several things, could be the water issue that this.
Don't answer. It's not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just, I'm trying to understand because we did just.
I made cracks.
Right.
Center of the road could be aggregate was mixed for asphalt and several things. I don't know that they, they really do a quality control.
Right.
On it.
Were you looking at a heater? And what's the other one up here?
Stack?
Stack, yes. I know those are, we've got those, trying to get those paved at some point.
Right.
Because of the limitations with the, with the OPWC work proposals.
And I wonder if we try Providence Road. Are we not going for Steck Road? I mean, that's in my.
Those were the two that we were gonna do last year and we pulled stack back because we made Providence a priority.
Right.
And we basically got ran over last year in the PW, OPWC. Because Dayton had like three projects and Miami Township had a couple and Washington had a couple and we were at the bottom of the bottom. And that's how we ended up in the state raffle. It's not a raffle, but basically putting all the other rans in a pot and making them compete against for a percentage of money and funding that, and that was loans. That wasn't even like a grant. So, yeah, any, any roads that we manage, we should prioritize those and like rank them, figure out if we have to do them with the. We can do them with the county at a little bit cheaper than doing them ourselves or if, or if they're bad enough and crack seal is a Band-Aid on a gushing wound. And they need to be prioritized for paving, then we can push those off to one side and deal with the ones that will benefit the most from the crack ceiling.
I would, I mean, I would like for you guys to come out and see, I mean, I can judge on my own.
Yeah.
But I would like for you guys to see that so you can, yeah, I think Caleb, you're right on this one or no, you're wrong. I don't agree with you on this or whatever. Just so we have, we're all kind of on the same page.
I know Thorn Apple's a little bit of a mess too.
Yeah, so. It's sinking in some spots, heaving in others.
And stack, would you, would you widen that or would you?
Yeah, that's what we proposed for the, the paving project that we ended up pulling last year.
I don't know if that's something that we might look into putting stack on there as well, OPWC.
It doesn't hurt us to do it. It's just we'd have to have Kramer and Associates really turn and burn to get that up to where the, because we redid the Providence one this year, right?
Yeah, well, it's still currently the same. We have that.
We have that and new business to discuss, right? Okay.
So we discussed the baiting of roads.
Yep, we got a spreadsheet and all that.
Have you started all that?
It's all done.
It's done.
A grade.
Okay, okay.
They've set really, while I was off for on vacation.
Good, so losses away, work gets done, is that what you're saying? Good, okay, well, so, yeah, let me know, we'll get together and, I mean, individually and go take a ride.
Sure.
Or if you want to give me a spreadsheet, I'll go give my grade, give them theirs and they can go get.
I mean, I could put on the side of the comments of this is the stuff I'm looking at. This is what I think.
If you want to just email it out, I mean, I drive the township weekly, so I'd be happy to do that when I'm out and about anyhow. That way I don't have to impede your schedule or what you have going on through the week.
I agree. I'll make it work one way or another. That'd be.
Get enough house to do, right?
Awesome, right, I'm just, I'm just hanging out.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you.
Police report. Our July stats were completed, waiting on my IT guy to get it posted to our website. I was informed that the fishing derby will be moved to September due to some of the heat conditions and stuff that we're having here in August. Last month, I sent an email to Sergeant Kindler from DPD regarding the LPR grants. He responded back to me. He's checking to see if that grant is still available and if they have additional LPRs. The class that I was slated to go to in August twenty, or starting August twenty-ninth, that class has been canceled due to the homicide trial being that week. The September twelfth through September twenty-third, that's an instructional skills course, which it allows me to be able to teach several different topics that OPADA requires. That would be pretty beneficial here to the department that I can do updates and stuff on for the guys here. The October first through October seventh as the FBI law enforcement executive training. October the eleventh through the thirteenth, Sergeant Douglas and I are going to be certified and field training officers. So we can check that block and make sure people are good to go with their, their field training and everything. Over the last month, I completed six public records requests. I updated our domestic violence reports to BCI. Our OVI hours or OVI reports, not just the hours, because there's a stack of stuff that I have to submit. But the OVI reports have been emailed for the grant. The OVI grant contract is currently in the works for next year. They're just waiting to have some additional signatures before they push them out to be reviewed by the local municipalities, have a signature and sent back to them. Perry Township Police Department assisted with the Brookville Community picnic. Perry Township officers attended the funeral for Deputy Matthew Yates. Had a canine assist with the city of Trotwood. Kai indicated on the vehicle and out of the vehicle was recovered a hundred and fifty-nine point forty grams of methamphetamine and eleven point six grams of marijuana. I asked the board to pass a motion for Officer Cox. He was rehired on seven twenty-four at twenty-two part-time at a rate of sixteen dollars per hour.
I make a motion to accept the hire of Officer Cox. So at a part-time rate of sixteen dollars per hour effective July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
September twenty-fourth, Brookville Police Department has requested for us to assist them with a dedicated officer from four PM to ten PM. And that's going to be for the five K walk that they're doing. Five K and a block party.
Gotcha.
So. And then you can see the total hours there that I put in for July, two hundred and twenty-three hours or two hundred and twenty-three point two five hours for the month of July.
Excellent. Anything else?
Other than the email that I was sent, I don't know where the board stands on that.
So we have a discussion. We're gonna have an executive session at the end of this meeting.
Okay.
Something else. We want to do an executive session now to discuss the complaints of a public official.
I just didn't know where that fell within the agenda of the board, so that's why.
I was going to address it during the report, during the police report, so we can. Everybody's good with that? Okay, then I make a motion to adjourn into executive session in accordance with Ohio Revised Code one twenty-one point two-two paragraph G one to discuss the complaint. Always, I can never find this one. Second. Complaint against a public official. I move that we adjourn. Wait, let me redo this.
Okay.
I make a motion in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, section one twenty-one point two-two, paragraph G one to discuss the complaint against a public official. We move into executive session.
Second emotion.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Make a motion to return to regular session.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
All right, anything else for the police? Okay. Zoning Department.
Hey, um. I attended a Zoom meeting with trustee music regarding our I-Works and having a trash payment set up online so the residents would be able to pay online and we're still working on that and looking into that. I want to give a reminder to all Perry Township residents that if you have an outstanding trash bill of more than a hundred and nine dollars, it needs to be paid by August thirty-first or the outstanding balance will be turned into the auditor's office, which then will be assessed on your taxes. And those residents will receive a delinquent letter, reminder letter that I'm going to be mailing out this Friday. I will be setting up a BCA hearing for seven PM on September the eighth. I've issued five permits since our last trustee meeting, one shed, one swimming pool, one single family home, one pole barn and one overhead structure. And as a reminder, I want to remind everyone to please check with my office before building or putting up a swimming pool or getting a shipping container to see if you need a permit. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Reports. In the last month, I've continued to administer and update the township's social media for in general IT management, maintenance and upkeep of township systems. Purchased and installed a new backup power supply to replace the antiquated one in the fiscal officer's office. Held an initial discussion with Oasis on the possibilities of accepting online trash payments through the township website and performed weekly driving inspections of township roads, cemeteries and nuisance properties. I didn't attend any trainings this month, but I will be, I need to see what OTA is doing for next month. And it may be limited.
There's not a whole lot more.
There's a couple of recordings I need to reach out on them on that I was unable to make, but that's all I have.
Know which one you want because I've requested some, so.
Okay, yeah, the one about staying out of jail. I think that's a good one.
I have that one.
I need that one.
Okay.
That's all that I have.
Trustee Mears?
Uh, let's see, I did a follow-up with the soil and water with the Ms. Wright and they were going to get in contact with her. Talked to them a couple of different times. I will be attending a meeting with them at Rob's Restaurant for ditches. Did you get that letter? You want to go with me?
Sure.
Okay, I'll bring it by tomorrow. Is it like seven thirty in the morning or something?
What day?
And next week, I think I'll bring it down to her. And just working with Karen a little bit on the houses and that's about it.
Okay, thank you very much, trustee music.
So did, we did get that call with I-Works and that was just kind of more of an information. We knew we had the system available. We use it for trash billing. We wanted to get a little more information on if it was capable or how much more that would cost the township if we went that route, so. See Thursday, Friday, I'll be attending the Ohio Township Leadership Academy meeting in Columbus. That's about it, about it to report on.
And just so you know, the, for the trash payments, when we, when Karen and I met with Oasis, we were looking at the option of being able, the township being able to accept those funds. We weren't looking at like a bank account, like a, a, a transfer or a sweep account that we put that into and then transferred it in to be able to process the, or pull the funds over. We were just looking at the capabilities to the website, right, because that's been something that residents have asked for for years is a way to pay online. So paying online, you have, we now have a website.
Right.
Which we can process. The township will not be doing PayPal for the foreseeable future. There's too many legal issues there. There is through a processor like I-Works who's, we're already dealing with. The other thing with I-Works is, is that we're also evaluating the services that we consume from them and if we want to go another way.
Right.
So that's good information to have.
Yep.
But that's why I wanted you to understand that we're kind of compositing a couple of different things together.
I knew you were working on with the website, so I knew you were doing that and.
We wanted to see what the mock-up would look like of actually being able to process that, what the security footprint would be for the website without dealing with any of that backend stuff. So on the backend, we'd have to set up a bank account for that under the township where the money would go in and then we would transfer that money out to deal with the bills directly. But without getting into that, because that's much more complicated and that's that line with finance that I don't cross. We were just looking at the technical aspect.
Right.
So one, going forward because I'll see about maybe Karen, if you could set something up with Patrick to just do a run through with trustee music. That way he's aware.
Okay.
And you can ask your questions.
Yeah, I, questions that I-Works kind of asked me was, you know, as, as far as kind of how we would do that. And I said, I knew there was something in the works on your end with the website. And so I didn't want to do anything with I-Works until we knew what the.
Right, at this time, we're looking, we're looking for ways to do it. Then, then we'll figure out because if, if we can do it on our own through the website and it's not a huge security issue and it's not a burden, that may make sense because then we could decouple that from what we're doing with I-Works. And then we can look for another provider for what we're doing I-Works with and have a smaller footprint there because we're only doing the payment processing and accept and that, so.
Well, I also have to have it blessed by the Auditor of State's office.
We do, and that's why, there again, that's that, that line that we need to make sure that we're well on the side of.
If we look at the man-hours and the stamps and how long it takes to process trash bills.
Yeah.
That in and of itself is a huge call, so if we do it another way, does that offset or does it just create a same amount of work?
Well, it depends because another capability would be people being able to register for email bills.
For e-bills?
Right. That's not part of what we were doing with Oasis, but we could work with them to establish pass-through accounts that could actually receive those emails and send those through to where they needed to go. But that would be something for a provider like I-Works that we would discuss as a list of evolving requirements that we have other than just printing out the bills and mailing the bills.
And I reached out to other municipalities as well, as far as what is your participation rate from residents? And similar size places as us, it was about a twenty-five percent participation rate. So take that math off. You still have to do seventy-five percent of what you're already doing.
Right.
And so.
Well, and that's also why the rates go up from time to time is because we have to cover the people that don't pay, that haven't paid in three to four years because we have to provide the service.
Right.
And there's an additional cost that, oh, I didn't even think about what we're talking about with this because we just had to pay it the other day. For us to even be able to do the mailings, we have to get a permit through the post office, which cost us four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
And that's just to do the mailings, mailing. That doesn't include any of the postage. That's just for the permit.
That's only at Brookville Post Office.
It's not, we can't go to New Lebanon with that or anywhere else. We have to go to Brookville for right now because that's where we're certified to do it.
Right, right.
Yes, ma'am, you got a question?
I pay my bill online and so there is a way.
So if you do it through your bank and your bank will cut a check and send the check to us, that's how that works, yes. Yeah, we're talking about being able to actually take like a debit card transaction through the website or through another way so that you wouldn't have to do your e-bill. You could actually go to the site and pay it if you want to. But if you have, if you set it up to auto pay. Bless you, because a lot of people don't do that, so that's awesome.
And the thing is like, and this is what we've talked about, when I send the bills out at the end of the quarter, obviously during the first part of, or the first month in the next quarter. Obviously during the first part of, or the first month in the next quarter, that's all I do is process checks.
And so when you and I were talking earlier about being able to pay weekly. I don't remember seeing that on my bill. Would it benefit you?
The problem with the bill is those are those little, what are they, three by five?
Yeah.
Those cards, okay? And the way that it's set up, that is program is in I-Works is what the system that we use. And I don't have access, accessibility to go in there and make changes to that. They've got it set up.
But the letters that you're getting ready to send on Friday, if you were to just tag at the bottom, you know, this is your capability. Two weeks, every month. If you did that, do you think maybe you would get more people to pay?
Possibly, and I, I think what we also need to do is we might need to do more. Utilize our website more by putting those notices and things on there. This is just a reminder, you know, you can do it this way. You can, you can write a check for the entire year. And, you know, then you're still going to get your quarterly bill, but it's going to show up with a credit until that credit goes back down to zero. So, and there's people that do that because they, they forget, because you're only writing four checks a year for the trash. So, and it's easy to, to forget or those little cards are easy to lose. So.
So there's more coming. Those capabilities and ability to pay through different methods. Okay. Do you have anything else? Okay, old business. Uh, we can deal with the OPWC here. Because we, we basically reran this from last year because we didn't end up getting in on the state.
Yeah.
Small loans. The question came in about increasing. The amount of money that we pay for the in-kind labor. To ensure us a higher rating, so that we're competitive to be able to actually succeed. Instead of having to deal with this on our own again, which means it, you'll get pushed to next year. Just, that's the shorthand is if we're on, left our own devices, it gets pushed to the following year. All the while, we'll have more next year. And so on and so on. So, uh, last year we had sixteen percent in-kind labor. Which came to.
The sixteen percent, I believe, is the local funds that we were contributing because the in-kind labor state.
Right, 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 right. You're right. I misspoke. That, that is correct. Because up until this year, I think we only really did the in-kind labor. We, we didn't even talk about monies until last year. That was something that we added as a possibility. So last year we had local funds and the amount of forty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars. And that put us. Basically they rate based on the percentage of the project. And if you're, I think we ended up getting two points. For that. And you can see that if the local funds has increased from sixteen percent to thirty-seven percent, which would put it at one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. That would gain us one point on the OPWC shares. And if we put it to fifty percent, it moves us up to a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars for a total of four points. Now this is, now this is one of the most. These points, even though I'm talking in increments of one, are the very competitive areas that we can actually affect. The amount of points that we get. Because a lot of it is based on the price of the project. The in-kind labor, which we had been limited previously and I think we're still kind of capped it, about twenty-four. We have, we have two and a half people and other work to do through the season.
Right.
So we have to kind of weigh out what our in-kind labor would be. So I think we're, we're solid at the twenty-four thousand, one thirty-three, right?
Yep.
So the only thing that we can actually. Do to increase our local share is to increase the amount of money that we're paying in. Now, that said, do we have anything on? Well, I'll just ask the fiscal officer. Our monies currently lie. Which ones are feasible and which ones are not feasible of those three options that they laid out?
I mean, it's just going to depend on what we're doing. I mean. Or it's, a lot of it will depend on, we talked about using some of the ARP money.
Yep.
To help with some of that. So a lot of it's going to depend on where we're at with that.
Right. Well, and that's, that's something else that we have to figure out, right, is. Cause the second tranche was a little bit bigger than the first one because they had additional monies coming through. We have to carve that up. So if we want to earmark. The Providence Road project. We also have talked about the ARPA funds tonight, so.
Well, a lot of that I'm still waiting on documentation back from the attorney that's helped.
We can speak notionally.
Yes.
About the ARPA funds because we know the pie is about yay big. Uh, we can, how many pieces we can cut it into notionally.
Right.
And still be okay. So that's an option. We do need. One to two new trucks. The possibility of. I'll take that back. We need one truck.
One.
We may be able to get more than one based on the right deal with the state.
Right.
So there's a possibility there to get that done. We already have that money set aside from the first tranche. Are, are we going to need any more funding? Does it look like we're going to need any more funding?
Well, you guys had talked about flipping that from the dump truck over to the Bobcat.
Right.
But we had previously set aside the forty thousand dollars towards the new dump truck.
Right.
Was going to be redirected to the Bobcat.
So that did come out of the ARPA funds.
Okay.
And then we still have the other portion of the Bobcat.
Right.
Which was offset by selling the tractor, albeit not in.
Not the full amount.
It took a quarter of it.
Right.
Right. Okay.
We also can, we can also still stay where we're at when the first round.
And, and.
At, after the first of the year, assess it if we want to put more money from our funds into that.
Right.
Make it more competitive going into the small funds or small government bid. Which is another option. I mean, this is to look at.
What about in-kind labor? Is that not going to change at all? It was the Bobcat.
Like, the biggest part was adding. With this being the first one that I would be a part of with them, I did not feel comfortable. Holding up the train because I wanted to save us forty-five hundred bucks.
Okay.
Uh, I, I feel. I mean, it's not a, a substantial amount of money that we're going to save, but with the first one, I just didn't want to hold the train. How it was laid out, well, how it all went and Clay Township's wanting to, they're getting ready to do Temple Road. Able to go up to watch, see how things go, you know, throughout the week or whatever. I get a better understanding for that.
Under, understand that the, what we did last year didn't work for us. We ended up losing out at the OPWC issue two rating and then again with the state, uh, state loans and grants.
Right.
So. We can stay there and if, if, if we don't have the funds to do more than that, then that is what it is. That's where we are. We don't have exorbitant funds to be able to get a lot of these roads dealt with because trust me, we have a lot of roads that need attention. Providence is a mess between Wolf Creek and Diamond Mill.
Have we ever reached out to the state to see if they're?
I have tried to reach.
We've tried.
I've tried and tried.
The only thing we could get them to do was they did end up turning down that house. That was a squatter's paradise up there on that road. But other than that, if they don't answer the phone and it's, it's hard to get ahold of anybody up there. So if you want to try, please feel free because, uh, you know, maybe you do better than, than we did. We, we've tried.
I could take a field trip over to Houston Woods and.
There you go. That's where their local offices.
That's where they're at.
I just, I didn't know if we had talked to them or not.
I've tried. I've tried to reach now, left messages and I just can't get them to call, kind of contact me back.
With that house coming down, the crime that we've had over there has gone down significantly.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you wanted me to contact them about putting some up, a rope or something.
So they finally brought out like cable.
Yeah.
And two center blocks, so it couldn't be moved.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then they still need a bush hog back there though.
It's. Because it's not wooded.
No.
It's just overgrown.
Yes.
Right? So it's still a problem.
Spring, I was just lucky enough to find some guy down there mowing and he worked for him, so he told me what was going on.
Right.
So he said, here's the number you can call. So, yeah.
I, I, I might say, I'd rather push another road back another year if, if we can all but help it. I mean, obviously it comes out if we can afford it, but we've already pushed.
Sure.
This road back and this road back and this road back and, and yeah, they're not going to get any better.
So do we know approximately what we have from the ARPA funds?
We haven't done anything with the second tranche yet. I mean, we know, we talked about it.
Was it about a hundred and seventy-six?
Uh, yeah, something like that. I've got, I can go pull the certificate.
So what else, what else notionally did we have identified for that? We had the truck because we were going to flip between the Bobcat and the truck. So the truck, that's forty, right?
So that, we have one thirty-two.
One thirty-six. See, even if we took fifty out of that, we're still below.
Right.
Thirty-seven percent. So. I mean, we, it doesn't look like we could do much more there. The only thing that we could do is. What would be the cost of hiring another person? Could you look into that?
Yeah.
Because if you could, if, if we. Exactly. That way we can offset it at a rate that we can deal with, without having to pay the large money out of pocket to bring the percentage up. We, we actually talked about doing that for the cemeteries too, is, is maybe plusing up one or, or a couple of part-time people. If this is something that fits within that window, that may be a way to increase the in-kind without paying the.
Right.
Money.
Right.
And that's just some out of the box thing and that, that may work for us. It may not work for us. Uh, what's the deadline that?
August thirty-first is the time she has to have it in this, the first round.
We've got plenty of time, right?
I don't want to kill her either. She's.
Well.
She does a lot.
So if you, if you can work with fiscal officer grill. On what it would, you know, what someone, like the skill level.
The hourly rate or an hourly ra- range.
Whether it's part-time pe- people or a full-time person. I wouldn't be opposed to a special meeting to drive that in, in the next week and a half to just kind of. Be able to update this and get it to Kramer in enough time that they can get it submitted cleanly.
Right.
So if you, if you're up for that, then, and let's give that a shot and let us know when. When we can meet and we'll coordinate as best we can to.
I'll talk to her in the morning and see what, with, what the in-kind labor will look like.
Yeah, a- ask her what it is per FTE.
Okay, right.
So that way, because the in-kind labor may be greater than the rate at which we're paying. It should be. Just information on the calculation.
Okay, I'll get it.
So the ARPA funds, I guess, that's kind of old business too. So. Twenty-seven-six K, is it forty or fifty for the truck?
We have forty set aside for the truck.
Forty set aside.
We were figuring about eighty for the truck.
We start on the Bobcat.
That's like the thirty.
Well, it depends because if you're, we're flipping what we, the forty, we already had a set aside for the Bobcat. And that takes away the forty, we're back up to eighty for the truck. And then we have the additional amount still.
Forty from the truck for the Bobcat.
Correct.
So the Bobcat.
And then, but we still needed more for the Bobcat.
More for the Bobcat.
And then we need the truck.
Right. So forty K for the truck and then.
Well, about thirty-five extra for the Bobcat. The Bobcat total was eighty, eighty-five.
So that brings us to forty-five for the Bobcat, but then we're back to zero for the truck.
Minus twelve for the.
Minus the twelve for.
Tractor.
The tractor.
So if we're pulling.
Was it?
Forty out of the permissive or out of the gas tax for the truck and then.
Well, we, we, okay, so we have, okay. So we have the fifty.
Right.
That's been there for a while.
Right, for the truck, right.
Plus, then we had set the forty out of the first tranche.
Right.
But it went to the bank.
But then you guys wanted to flip it to the Bobcat. So then, yeah, that brings us back to forty-ish for the.
For that.
And then we still need another thirty-five.
Thirty-five for the Bobcat.
Bobcat.
All right. Did we, we had some stuff out of the maintenance garage with not the, uh. Fixing of the office space, but there was something with, was it the heat?
But yeah, either electrical.
There's no heat in there out there right now.
Right.
Right. So that was something else that we were going to fix there.
We have, what was thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-five hundred for the, for the.
Mini split.
Was mini split? Just three, you said three thousand?
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred?
Everything included.
Yep, everything. Electric's done. It's been upgraded. We talked about doing some type of generator, a permanent generator there.
We did talk about a generator. Um, and I know chief, we talked about a generator for up here too. If we had a mobile generator. That basically we could use at the garage, if the garage was down, or we could use up here if up here's down. Because being slightly geographically separated.
Right.
There's a chance that we wouldn't need them at both places. And if we did need it at some place, here is probably where it would be needed the most.
Well, I guess it depends on, yeah, I mean, we definitely need one, but we would need two of those. If it was a counter-slay to see if they had.
Depends on the, let's go around what's going on.
But I checked a lot.
Oh, uh, DLA?
Yeah.
Okay.
The last time I checked, they didn't have anything, but that's.
Well, that, that would be a.
Slow.
Like a, a DOD diesel on wheels.
Yep.
I used to work on those. Unfortunately, as an IT, as an IT guy, it fell into my realm of, you can't run the IT stuff if you don't have the electricity. So I kind of got pushed over into that. Because I, I, I mean, if it's a. Like a pickup and move generator, you know, like a ten thousand.
Yeah.
Generator that runs on multi-fuel, gas, diesel, LP. Those run about twelve thousand, right?
Yeah.
We'd have to start out at the maintenance garage and we'd have to. Start it up and take it wherever we were going to use it. Could we afford more than one? Yeah. But we'd also have to work out the fuel, right? What fuel will we be using? Whatever's cheapest at the time, whether it's gas, diesel or LP, right? Um, we don't have natural gas running to this building, I don't believe. We don't have it going in the maintenance garage either. So we would be limited to something that ran on that. I know I've looked into those. I think the twelve thousand kilowatt generators run about. Twelve to fifteen thousand.
I don't think you would need near that for the, for the maintenance building. There's nothing out there that's running that would draw that much amperage.
I mean, in the winter time, you, you. No, but if you needed, if you needed one, it was multipurpose.
I understand.
Because if it had to come up here and we ran bare minimum, I mean, day-to-day, the police area has to be up and running, right? And that includes the phones, what's in the, uh, the switch cabinet and everything else.
I think if you had a, a snow emergency that took the power down, I mean, we want to be able to make sure the maintenance is getting and be able to get their stuff up.
We do. And, and we may have to do something along the lines of a.
But if we all wanted to rent one.
We can still rent the fuel. We got the.
We have.
Got the fuel burner, right?
I mean, we, we could get by with less kilowatts, I believe.
Right.
Depends on what you needed to do and what time of year it was.
For the maintenance garage, yes, we have to try to figure out what this building needs. Like if we bare-boned it, everything turned off, it's not necessary and probably isn't in the police area. What is our kilowatt need there? And that would quantify what the top end is for a generator.
Right.
Anything that we would get for here would be fine for the maintenance garage. We've already got the plugs in place to be able to do that. You just have to make sure that they're the same kind of plug, right?
Right.
So, I mean, that's the other thing. Don't assume that the plugs are going to be the same. So we're going to have to make sure that we're rated for the same plug that we had, uh, installed at both buildings. So chief, if you could look into that and figure out and work with Karen, figure out what the load is that would have to be carried here. Then we can bring that into our next conversation. Cause the ARPA funds, we don't have to sprint to use. We just have to make sure that when we. Cut up the pieces, that the pieces that we need will be there. So I'm just going to put for now a placeholder of fifteen K for a generator. So I'm just going to put for now a placeholder of fifteen K for a generator. Hopefully it's lower. And, uh, well, that comes to ninety, ninety-three, five.
We're down to eighty-three, five.
Eighty-three, five? That's why you're the fiscal officer and I'm the trustee. Okay. We're eighty-five K. So that's about almost half. And we, and we don't have to rush to spend this money. We have two years, right? We have till twen- well, more than that, isn't it till twenty-six?
I think so. They, they extended it.
So include what we're paying Karen because she was only on for a year and a half.
That was carved out of the first one.
That's all the first one. So if we're going to extend that.
And honestly, we haven't.
Longer, would we not have to extend that as well? That's.
We haven't pulled out of that yet.
Okay.
So we, we set that aside because we haven't done a lot with the administrative.
Okay.
We've only, but we've have pulled a little bit out of it. That was when her and I had to do the training to do the reporting.
Right.
We had to do.
Right, okay. So I think we're good if, if we take ten percent instead of aside for IT. That, that's something that's going to continue to be a, uh, something the township needs and it will evolve. Right now, I know that some residents have said, very few residents have said, but some townships have a monitor that sits behind the trustees. It shows the agenda that shows different presentations. When someone's up here speaking, they can go through the presentation. That was an option when we got this set up. It's not very expensive to plug it into the system we already have. It's a possibility. I'm not saying that I want to spend that money. I'm just saying it's a possibility. We have residents who don't have, we have an older resident base.
Okay.
They don't see too well. No, no, no. I'm not, I didn't look at you when I said that now. Don't try to get me in trouble. But no, being able to have stuff that people can read from a distance is a good thing to have as well. It also saves us on killing trees because our, our paper bill is exorbitant, although it has been coming down and we do appreciate that. So if.
If we did ten percent, that would be setting out another seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars.
I don't think we, I don't think we have to go that high.
I don't think we do either.
I would say five percent. That'd be.
Eighty-five hundred.
Eight point eight. That gets us to ninety-two. And I think honestly.
It's a tw-.
Ninety-two, three.
No.
No. Not if we were at eighty-three, five.
Eight, eight point eight, eighty-three, five plus eight point eight.
Minus.
No, I'm adding the amount that we're spending, not what we're taking it away from. I'm eyeballing the one seventy-six.
Okay.
I'm adding the, the deductions.
Okay. I'll say I'm taking away from.
I'll, I'll at least stand up for myself in that regard. I, I do know how to do basic math.
See, I take away.
Which then still gives us about forty-five percent that we can figure out later. But I think that's a good earmark for stuff that we have a priority that we, we agreed previously that we needed to acquire. Is there anything else that comes into anyone's mind that we've talked about previously that we were going to do in the second tranche?
I just, we were going to help you out with the building and tools if there's anything.
The prioritization of, of what you guys needed over there.
Um, and we have, we have an equipment list, wish list. We have all kinds of.
Right.
Ideas. And we can talk about that next Friday.
Yeah. So.
I have the same list because Motorola is doing an update on their radios. Our in-car radios, our portables will maintain the up, the upgrade. The in-cars will not.
Right.
So to replace all those and to update, oh, update the modems because they're so outdated as well. The last quote that I was given was thirty-two thousand.
When was that deadline, Chief?
That.
It's going to go till when?
That one's already expired, so I have to get a new quote.
Uh, they were going to be updated.
Uh.
By this date.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-five.
Okay.
So. Um, I mean, that's just, if we got the funds and we can, then that just saves.
Oh, it's coming.
It's just saves on my end. And there's a couple of things, uh, you know, we're running in, I got the list back there. I can print off. But we're finding ourselves more and more situations with assisting agencies where ballistic shields are an absolute necessity.
Right.
And, you know, picking up one or two of those, um, would be tremendous.
So why don't we? Why don't you go and figure out what you need? What you'd like to ask for in this list? Prioritize it.
It's, it's already done, sir.
The same thing. Okay.
How come I don't get a list?
And then if you could do that as well, because we'll, we'll talk about that next Friday. That's actually going to be a meeting that I probably end up talking with trustee, trustee mirrors may end up taking that over. I think she will. Um, so I'll set that up.
Okay.
And, um.
Can I ask that you guys send me that list too, so I can run it through legal counsel on the art because I want to make sure that everything is falling within the parameters before we.
Sure.
Do any kind of resolutions.
Yeah, we do have coverage there now, so it's good to be able to leverage them to make sure that we don't misstep with the best of intentions. So.
Do you want my list, Jason?
Where's your salary?
It's part of the IT.
I, I still left out.
Oh, it's okay. If you got a list. Okay. Well, I think that's a good start for the second tranche. We'll revisit this once we have the additional information from the police and the Rose Cemeteries. Okay. Is there anything else for the ARPA funds? Okay. Anything? Okay. Any other old business? Okay. Any new business? We do have the one thing, which is the November Board of Trustees meeting is scheduled for election day. So we will need to move that day. Um. Is there? I guess we have the option of moving it to the first or moving it to the fifteenth. And since we published this previously, we, we will have to make a motion on this, correct?
I, you want first?
The first.
First is fine. Oh, 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 no, I, I will be out of town.
Okay, the first is fine. Sorry, hold on a minute.
Yes, I will be out of town.
Okay. Fifteenth, okay. At this time, I make a motion to move the November twenty-twenty-two Board of Trustees meeting from the eighth to the fifteenth.
I second.
Trustee mirrors?
Yes.
Christie Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee music?
Yes.
Other new business?
No.
Is there anything else that we have? Well, let's see, visitors, visitors. Thank you. I saw the motion. Uh, Mr. Acker.
It's okay. Most of the things I wanted to know, I think it's already been discussed.
All right, excellent. I love that. Um, all right. So at this time, I'm going to make a motion in accordance with Ohio Rice Coast Section one twenty-one point twenty-two, paragraph G one, that we adjourn into executive session to discuss the compensation of a public employee and the discipline of a public employee.
Second motion.
Trustee music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee mirrors?
I'll let everybody know this could take a while. This is the last thing that we're discussing. When we're done, we, we're going to come back and adjourn. So if, if you want to stay, you can stay. If you don't want to, I don't know how long this, this could be a while.
On Friday, is that for the public?
Meeting Friday.
Next Friday.
No, no. So there, there was, there's a once a month meeting between a trustee and the Rhodes and Cemeteries to prioritize their budget, figure out any issues that they have with manning or planning for projects, just to make sure that we're, we're up to task and covered all the way around. So, all right, I will pause the recording. All right. I make a motion to return to regular session.
Second.
Trustee mirrors?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee music?
Yes.
All right. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Trustee music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee mirrors?
Yes.